To the Plowing Board Meeting of June fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, I invite you to join us for this Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the Bible of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice in all. Uh, we'd like to call to order this meeting, oh, yeah, the Town of Burlington will be holding the June fifteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting of the Plowing Board as a hybrid meeting. The Governor issued an executive order on March twelfth, twenty twenty, authorizing remote meetings under General law.
Chapter thirty A, section twenty.
And extended by chapter two of the Acts of twenty twenty-three, including permitting remote meetings and participation until March thirty-first, twenty five. As all mates, members of the public are welcome to attend this in person meeting. Please note that while option for remote attendance is being provided, as a courtesy to the public, the meeting won't be suspended if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast. Uh, members of the public of particular interest on a specific item on this agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. Those seeking to attend, um, remotely, so via WebEx, um, town of WebEx dot Burlington dot com is the URL. Our meeting number is two, three, four, six, nine, eight, three, four, two, four, five. And you can join by phone on WebEx at one, six, one, seven, three, one, five, zero, seven, zero, four. Um, we're being broadcast when we become. Comcast ninety-nine, R C I fifteen, and Verizon four-five will stream on Facebook Live via the B C A government Facebook page. Okay, next without announcements, um, Kelly, do you have any other questions?
Sure. Um, so, on June twenty-first at eight-thirty a.m., the, there will be a Sculpture Park Committee meeting that will be virtual via Cisco WebEx. Um, this upcoming Monday, June nineteenth, all town offices will be closed in observance of Juneteenth. Uh, the second of the Eversource Community Conversations will be happening next Wednesday, June twenty-first, from six to eight p.m. in the Burlington Public Library. And Town Shred Day is this Saturday, June seventeenth, from nine a.m. to twelve p.m. in the parking lot behind Town Hall.
It's one of my husband's favorite days. Okay, do any other members have announcements?
Uh, I, I would agree, I could just, I'm shocked, what if I could, uh, last night, uh, B C A helped their annual meeting and awards ceremony, and there was a couple of, a lot of, forgive it up. But there are a couple I wanted to mention in particular, one was to Phil Gallagher for volunteering for forty long years. Well, the beginning of B C A, he was originally on the Board of Selectmen, then B C A was formed. And so he became the representative of the selectmen, I guess, on the Board of Selectmen, and he stayed, and he's still there. So forty years.
Congratulations, Phil.
I know, I ran against them back then. First go up.
And the second one, uh, award, there were, as I said, there were many, but these two really stood out, and second one was to Jed Dodge, who was the executive director for twenty-five years at Eversource. And, um, I, I know that people from other towns who have had the chance to watch B C A have really commented on how professional and very well done. And I'd like to thank B C A for staying up late with us quite for nights and, uh, and broadcasting the media, thanks.
Thank you, Arnie, and thank you to Phil and Jed for doing years of service. Any other members have announcements? No? Okay, then we'll be moving on, we do not have any legal notices or non-approvals. So we'll move on to our first administrative matter, item A, which is a discussion, request for approval of minor engineering change, ten Corporate Drive, the Gutierrez Company is the applicant. Welcome, please state your name for the record.
Sure. Scott Weiss with the Gutierrez Company, thank you for having me. We are back in front of you, uh, uh, this week to hopefully clarify, um, our request for minor engineering change, uh, which one was up first, uh, was it?
On the ten Corporate Drive.
Yep. Uh, a couple of weeks ago, we were in front of you to add, um, a couple dozen, um, um, electric vehicle charging spots, or one dozen charging stations, each dual charging stations. And there was some discussion about the requirements for the handicap accessible stations, uh, at that point, and, uh, I think, as I mentioned, um, we were certainly more than willing to do whatever the board wanted, uh, subject to the D E P requirements, which I believe, uh, required that those, those spots be accessible and available, but not restricted. And that is the D E P requirement, the mass D E P requirement. And so we are obligated, under the program that we're participating in, to provide those E V spaces, to make them accessible and available for anyone to use. Uh, we cannot, under the program, restrict them to handicap use only.
Thank you, staff.
Um, this, yep, so this came to our attention, um, actually, our Conservation Administrator, John Keely, looked into this, he's very familiar with the D E P, and so this is a three-D E P program, so he was able to find it and help us out, so.
Okay, fellow board members, does anyone have any questions? Yes, please, Joe.
Um, so Scott, is that, so how many, you, again, there were eight charging stations, is that right, is that, so?
There, there are actually, uh, for ten Corporate Drive, we are planning twelve charging stations. That will serve twenty-four parking spots, so they're located in between, and they have two, two cords to, to serve two spots for, at each station.
And so that, and that's, and none of those are going to be handicap, uh, exclusive?
They're not handicap exclusive, that's correct. There's a requirement, like in the general parking, you have a requirement for a certain portion of spaces to be, um, handicap reserved. Those remain in place, and then there's a requirement that five percent of any electric vehicle charging stations be handicap accessible. And that's what we're, we're providing, actually.
So were you, so is that grant paying for this whole thing?
No.
And what, I mean, if you might remind me asking, what, what, I mean, what percentage is it paying for?
It does pay for a pretty significant portion of the, of the work, um, but it is not a hundred percent, is it, uh? What is it, it's better than fifty percent of the cost, though.
Okay, so is it possible to, that you guys will pay for one more charging station outside the grant and make it exclusive?
So, the way the whole program works with D E P and with Eversource, the utility provider, they work in lockstep. Um, in order for us to get the electric service to the site, which requires, you know, electric gear and transformer and that type of material, if you will, to provide the service, because obviously, people know electric vehicles can take some, some significant juice to charge. And, um, so they work in lockstep, the program for us to get the electric service dedicated, we have to go through D E P and their program, and they work together. And i- it's interesting, because just recently, we were finalizing the contract with Eversource, and we said, well, we'd like to strike the language that says, you know, we, we can't change the number of charging stations, stations to, we can't reduce the number of charging stations, so we have the ability to add to them? And they said, no, because the electric service that's being provided is for those chargers only. If you want to add charging stations, you gotta go back through the whole process again. And, and so you can't just, you know, say, hey, let's just plug in another one, they're gonna say, no, we don't have the electric accommodation for that. Um, the electricity accommodation for that, so.
So, how, so, so nobody can do anything outside of this program?
Well, I'm sure you can, but it's all subject to, you, like, whenever you do anything, if you're building a new building or creating a new electric service, we have to make an application to Eversource for service. So it's subject to Eversource's electricity availability.
So they won't, so you're saying Eversource will not give you even access to this stuff unless there's no handicap exclusive parking spots there?
No, and I'm not, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying that in order to go through and get the allocation of the service from Eversource, we have to, we, we have to go through this program.
So can you, can you request an additional one at your expense?
Uh, I don't know entirely, but I do know I won't be able to get there for this year. There's no way we would be able to get, because right now, we're being told, in this program, we're trying to get the, the work done this summer, and the electric components, the electricity components that Eversource provides, we're hoping to get by the end of the year, at best.
Now, for the public, can I ask you a question? Would you feel more comfortable if we permitted this as requested by Mr. Weiss, but we required our staff to follow up, let's say, at six months and at twelve months, to check in and to monitor whether or not there are problems with handicapped accessible vehi- handicap accessible vehicles being unable to get to the charging stations they need? Would that help?
I wouldn't, no, because, listen, I, we need to understand, from my perspective, the very first meeting thirty-three years ago, that I was in, as a Board of Selectman member, I started the Disability Access Commission. It was the Handicap Access Commission back then, it was one of the first in Massachusetts. It, it became one of the best in Massachusetts, and it's always been cutting edge. And I feel like this is a disgrace, to be perfectly honest with you, I, I, I don't, I don't understand it, it doesn't make any sense to me, it almost, I would almost venture to say it's a violation of the A D A. They, they require people to have handicap designated spots when you build a building.
Yes.
But they don't have to give equal access to charging stations, it, it seems illegal.
So, I, again, I, I'm not in a position to defend the state's determination on this, I do see it as a situation that is akin to, again, handicap accessible stalls in a, in a restroom. Um, in that those are not.
Well, I understand.
Only, but those are handicap accessible.
There's a big difference between a handicap stall, and, and, you know, if somebody's using the stall, they're gonna be in there for a couple of minutes, when someone's using a parking spot and they want access, you know, and, and somebody happens to.
Right, it could be, it could be a period of time, yeah.
They wanna charge their car and be.
Could be a period of time, that, that is correct.
In all the years, I mean, I, I was the liaison for fif- the fifteen years I was on the Board of Selectmen as well, and I, I've never heard of anything so, so unequal, to be perfectly honest with you, it just doesn't make any sense to me.
Have, have you reached out to the Disability Access Commission, do you know how, what they feel about this?
So I, I wasn't able, I just found this out, to be perfectly honest with you, I just found this out today, basically, yesterday, when they changed the rules in this thing, so I did get reached, uh, we had some members of the, that reached out. And I said, I'm not sure what is going on with this, but, you know, if you wanna tune in, maybe if some, but unfortunately, at that late, not, time, I'm not sure that anyone was really to, able to, you know, to, to do that, but.
So if I may, um, our interest is to try to add, um, electric vehicle charging stations at our, at our facilities, we do see that as, as a benefit to both, you know, the employees and visitors there now, and, and so we, we, we think that's a good thing, we have two applications here, we're, we're gonna keep going, you'll probably see me or us again. I'm more than willing to check in with D E P and get a response to this question, um, and to, I don't know if it's, it's reasonable, if, if such D E P requirements are to change, we're more than happy to, you know, comply with, with those, those modifications. I, I understand it as, as the interest in making the most and highest use of those stations, you know, on a ongoing basis, and not to have stations that might not get utilized much if, or if at all, if they're restricted. And I understand your, your concern about also having them available.
I mean, when you say they're not gonna use at all, like, because they're restricted, that doesn't, that makes zero sense, I, I don't, it makes zero sense to me, I don't really get it. I don't, I don't understand this whole thing about the, the D E P coming in and saying, you, you can't have a handicap exclusive spot in a charging station. It, it's almost like they're, they're saying that, you know, disabled people don't have electric cars. I mean, that's basically what they're saying, because they can let, anybody can get in that spot, and there's only two spots that are available that even, they can even use. They, they will most likely be the closest spots to the building, because they're still handicap access- accessible, and they'll be the widest spots, because they're chair, chair van accessible.
Yes.
So they're gonna be the most appealing spots for the general public to use first, which means to me, if there's five of them out of the four, twenty-four being used, it's probably gonna, two of them are gonna be those two spots.
Are there, are there two or four handicap accessible?
Two, two.
Is there option for signage that isn't the, um, that says.
Lawful.
Or, or even. Cause like, you see some places where it's like, you see at Lowe's, reserved for veterans only, you see at some schools, reserved for expectant mothers, obviously, that is not legally binding.
That's true.
However, you do not see people park in those spots, because majority of people will be respectful, is there any type of, while we hopefully petition back to the D E P saying, this makes no sense, is there an option to put up?
Or even a sign that, like, is more restricted, that says something like, please reserve. Or, please reserve for, or do not park, or that's all other.
Or use other spaces for.
Yes. I would be amenable to that, but I don't, what I don't want is, I don't want to make it difficult for companies to provide these spots, I want to encourage companies to provide these spots, and if the companies are being told that this is the program that they need to go through, and we are telling them that they have to somehow argue with the D E P, that's gonna discourage companies from creating.
Could, could we possibly put a pause on it and check with somebody to make sure and can?
With who, this is the D, this is.
I wanna, I, I would be comfortable, not comfortable, but I would love to see a letter from D E P saying that if there are two out of twenty-four of these spots are designated exclusively for handicap, you will not get the grant. I wanna see that letter, cause that letter's gonna take over from my hands to the A D A.
Well, I think it says.
And see what, what happened, what they have to say about it, or to the Attorney General's office, and see what they have to say about it, because that's, it, it should be one hundred and fifty percent illegal.
It says, accessible E V charging spaces may be used by any employee and must not be reserved for employees with disabilities, I mean, I don't say I'm agreeing with it, but that's what the D E P rules are saying.
All right, now, now, you got, you got my, you already know my vote, then. You can move on, do what you need to do.
Well, I mean, I think we're asking this company.
I'm not setting, I'm not setting that precedent, I'm not doing it.
No.
But then we're gonna get stuck with, um, D E P spots, then no one gets E V spots.
Well, you know what, so then nobody gets them, if, if, if.
Isn't that more fair?
Equally allotted, then nobody should get them.
Yeah, I don't thi- I think that it is fair, because if people who are handicapped can't use them, why can everybody?
I understand what you're saying, but we need to also look at the, the practical perspective.
I'm looking at it.
The result of us refusing to allow this company and others to.
I'm not setting a precedent.
To follow the rules that have been set forth by D E P, if we require something other than that, that they actually can't do unless they fight with the D E P.
Well, I think everybody should require it, to be perfectly honest with you, I think every town should require it, because they'll, they'll change their rules real fast.
But that's not within our.
All right, well, I have my vote, so you guys can take your vote and do whatever you need to do, if you wanna call for a vote, I'm gonna tell you what mine is.
Did I understand Scott correctly, that he was going to take a look and see what he could do, even if he had to pay for himself, but it probably wouldn't happen this year?
So, we are hoping that we can move forward with this.
Right.
Application and this program at this time, um, if, if we, if you deny it, obviously, we can't, if, if the obligation is to, is to restrict it, we can't comply with the program. Um, there's a certification that we need to comply that says, um, excessively, this is the certification language, accessible E V charging space, spaces may be used by anyone and must not be reserved for persons with disabilities. Do not install markings or signage, restricting the space to those within A D A accessibility placard. I can't, I, they, they have to be accessible, they have to be available, but not restricted.
It says restricting, right, so we, we, we could condition a motion, Madam Chair, that says, we could condition a motion that says, the applicant has to put a sign which, uh, which says, if there are other spaces available, please use.
I don't want that.
For some reason.
I'm filing that, but I don't think that's going to say it's not in all board members.
This is a migrant engineering change, do we have four votes?
I don't know, to be honest with that question. Um, Bill, do you have any questions?
Sure, yeah, so, you know, I, I, I was thinking about the same thing, about the, about the signage there, so if I were to have an electric vehicle, and I saw a sign that wouldn't, that not necessarily said fill out first for the others, but if it said, handicap accessible, you know, E V space, I would avoid that, right, I think, as most people, right, although it's not required, but if you, if you can, if you're.
Well, basically, in the opinion of the ground, it's not gonna be regular handicap signs like they, we require them to be up.
Isn't a handicap spot, isn't a handicap spot larger than?
It just can't be four foot, say.
No, it, it can be anything, right, it just can't be designated as such, as, as exclusive.
Right.
So if we say handicap accessible, and it looks exactly like one that's supposed to say, you know, handicap restricted, I would say the great majority of people would stay out of that spot.
I think you're right, Bill.
So, so are you guys willing to put up a four-foot, just same regulation, but only instead of handicap, it says handicap accessible?
I, I don't know that I can put up the, the standard handicap parking sign that says, it, it would have to look different, it would have to, in order for us to comply.
The words saying handicap accessible, that achieves what Bill is suggesting?
When you have a wheelchair on it.
There be some people who, who ignore that, yes, because some people park in handicap restricted places, because they're jerks.
But I think it's basically saying you can't put anything that looks like a handicap sign.
I think you can, I don't, I don't see, there's nothing.
I think we could, I think we could put up preferred parking for handicap.
I wouldn't say preferred, I would say something like handicap accessible, uh, you know, E V charging spot, yeah, and it doesn't say, you know, restricted, right? And if, and, and there's nothing in here that says you can't put up a sign with something that has a handicap on it, no, I'd make it close, right? You know, kind of, I'm not gonna say change the spelling slightly, but you could do that.
Change the pantone ever so slightly?
That's what I'm saying, so you can do things, and, you know, it gets copyrighted, that, right, so that's what I would do, I'd make it look as much as you could without, you know, being illegal.
And we're certainly willing to comply, we just don't wanna be stuck between.
The D E P.
D E P and, and the board, we wanna, we wanna comply with the program.
And, and to be honest with you, Scott, I don't wanna say no, because I think it's, I'm all in favor of these, I, you know, they're really, I really put up, not at all expense, is my thing, you know what I mean, not at all expense, I don't.
So, Scott, would you be willing to put up a sign, the details of which you can work out with our staff, and if possible, if necessary, to work this better with the Chair, Vice Chair, that says handicap accessible E V charging spot, that hopefully would have the same impact or similar impact to a handicap restricted sign?
I'm, I'm certainly willing to sign them, I just wanna make sure that we're in compliance with.
Sure, right, you did say you could put the, the, the normal sign on the ground.
What's that?
You did say you could put the normal handicap sign on the ground.
Yeah, I cannot install markings or signage restricting the space, so your typical handicap wheelchair emblem on a space.
Yeah.
Is interpreted by the general public, even though it said, doesn't say restricted, I can't install that painting.
But it's not the legal, so the, you, you can't make it legally restrictive to.
So I could perhaps, you know, paint the spaces blue, not with the handicap emblem, paint the spaces blue, have a sign, but it doesn't have that specific handicap only marking.
But it could say.
Again, I, I, I understand and I share.
Handicap accessible, no, charging.
How about if we, if we condition it such, that there will be signage that says handicap accessible, that the parking spots will be differentiated, and that staff, and Scott, and I, you trust me, will work it out, but we'll have to make sure that the D E P approves what we're doing, and so we will try to get as close as possible, without crossing the line to the point where they would deny.
Oh, we're fine with that.
There's somebody with her raised hand on my vice chair, you're opening it up to the public, I suppose.
I am going to open it up to the public, um, I can't see your name, sir, but I see your hand raised, please, um, identify yourself for the record and.
Uh, Kenny Tiggs, Chairman of the Burlington Disability Access Commission.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Yeah, I'd just like to, uh, put my two cents in, and I'd like to see this gentleman make a precedence and do most what he could do of signage without collaborating, you know, the, to, to mess up his program, but I think the signage on the ground would definitely be good. I'm a quadriplegic and electric wheelchair, I don't drive an electric vehicle yet, but I see myself in the future, and I'd like to see it, uh, go through fully, um, with signs and everything on the ground.
They can't do the ground, you said, right?
We can't do the exact same sign, but we can do something.
Close.
Close.
Is it way that it could be run through the Disability Access Commission to be approved, or?
We'd be happy to involve you as we look at the signage, I think that's a great idea.
That would be greatly appreciated.
Would you be the person to contact?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so if we condition it as such, that it's going to have that signage painted on the ground, and that Mr. Weiss will work out the details with staff, Chair, and the Chair of the Disability Access Commission, would that make everyone comfortable?
Yes.
I'm comfortable as long as it's fine.
Well, Mr. Tiggas will be invited to the meeting.
Thank you very much.
So it, it, it's gonna require approval of the Disability Access Commission?
Well, if we try to require approval, I guess, of Mr. Tiggas, I, I don't know if we're gonna have a whole Disability Access Commission.
Well, I, he's probably gonna wanna get it in advance and, and have it at a meeting, or at least, you know, dispense it throughout the committee, the committee, I would imagine, and, you know, get the feedback and come to some sort of a.
Well, I think you're telling Mr. Tiggas what he wants, but why don't we find out what Mr. Tiggas wants?
Yeah, on every third Monday, so if I can get some, um, paperwork or something, I'll bring it to the meeting on, um, the third Monday.
Right, okay, as soon as we get, and it might take a little while for Mr. Weiss to come up with the signage, and.
Ready for this one.
And so I can't say exactly what the, when it will come to you, but we can get it to you, and then at your next meeting, you can discuss it, how's that?
Okay, I'd also like to invite him to the meeting if he'd like to come.
I'm sure he will want to come.
That'd be great.
And Mr. Weiss, if you would like, I'd be happy to attend as well.
Correct.
So it's this Monday?
Oh, no, it'll be some Monday in the future, after Scott has had time to create the signage.
I, I'm sorry, when, when, if I may, through the Chair, when?
We usually meet every Monday, uh, third Monday of the month.
And you can contact them through, uh, Chris Hanafin at the Veterans Office, the Veterans Agent, this will actually sets the meetings up and, and.
Correct, or either, if not him, Jennifer Goldsmith, our secretary.
So I would guess we probably would not be able to do that in time for the third Monday in June, cause that is very close, we'd probably be looking at July.
Correct.
Okay. All right.
And I just wanna, just wanna take one off, if, if I may, just for one sec, literally a second, I wanna just thank Kenny for, Kenny was actually one of the charter members of the, of the, what was the Handicapped Access, is now the Disability Access Commission. And he's put, given more time to the Town of Burlington, going to establishments and, and using his, his air accessibility skills and, and regulating, you know, stores and aisles and everything else within buildings in the town, he's done phenomenal work over the years, and I thank him for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe, and we wish you were back on the board with us.
Thank you, Mr. Tiggas, is there anyone else in the audience, either online or in this room, that would like to speak on this matter?
Okay, seeing none, I think we are ready for a vote. And have a motion.
Madam Chair, um, if, if I can, uh, make a motion to, uh, amend the previous approval for the request of G B I T G C, ten Corporate Owner LLC, for approval of a minor engineering change of property located at ten Corporate Drive, to allow for twelve new dual-port electric vehicle charging stations, supporting electric vehicles charging at twenty-four spaces, including two handicap accessible locations, in addition, five existing accessible parking spaces will be located to be A D A and A A B compliant, in a body court that will be handed to an October amendment as reflected on the red line side, uh, set in title ten Corporate Drive, Burlington, Massachusetts, site plan approved by B S C dated March thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, revised May eighth, twenty twenty-three. This is a one sheet, subject to the following reasons, terms and conditions, as lament.
And, and that amendment will be subject to approval of. And that amendment will be subject to approval of disability access, Burlington Disability Access, correct?
Is that?
Not just that it gets run by them and then, you know, they plow forward and do what they want. It's got to be approved by them.
Does the board agree with that?
I don't.
I'm asking you, who you didn't, Madam Chair, does this, that the board would like to see?
Madam Chair, just a point, point of clarification.
Yes.
We're certainly comfortable with the signage and markings associated with the accessible spaces being approved by the Disability Commission, just to, just to clarify that. And, and I think that's fine as long as.
Right. And I think, um, that's fine as with the wording we'll say. I also think whether or not it said that, I think you can trust that I and staff would not ignore what the Disability Access Commission.
No, I'm not saying you ignore it, but I just want the language to be there that it's going to be approved, sorry.
Okay. Do I have a second? Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
By opposed, abstained? Great. Six zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss.
And I'm, I'm just, just as a side note, Scott, just, if, you know, going forward, like you said, you're probably going to be doing a lot of these applications. I would go, I would venture to go, you know, maybe go back to and say, look, this, you have some problems.
I will contact them tomorrow to follow up and, and ask the question, um, as to their decision-making process on this. I completely understand. I fully understand the issue and the concern and, and, and I can see it both ways in terms of the accessibility being there, but, and you're certainly concerned about it being unavailable because that's where people use first, so.
And I think maybe the point that needs to be made to them, I think this, there's a, and Kenny would know better than I, but there's, there's a minimum amount of spots that is required to require a handicap parking spot. You probably know, was it 16, 15, whatever, more than whatever, this exceeds it, right?
So, so the, this handicap accessible spot exceeds the ratio that's required in general parking?
That's what I mean. Well, it exceeds the ratio, but it, there's, there's a requirement that a designated spot after you have, I think, 15 or 16, whatever the amount of spot, and here you've got 24. That's what really blows me away because you've got 24 and there's not one that, and I know it's.
Reserved, right.
At this point, there's not one reserved, but yet they, they will tell any building that wants to, you know, operate a business in the, in the state of Massachusetts, that if you have 16 spots, you have to have a designated spot. Why wouldn't they be doing, I don't really, it, it just defies common sense. You know what I mean? And almost, it, it makes me believe, it makes me think that somehow the ADA hasn't really thought this one through or hasn't had their say in what the, you know, what the DEP or, you know, the ever source of what is, you know, running these grants is doing.
In fairness, and we have another application that we ask you.
We do have another.
Yeah, for you to do the same thing with, yeah.
One of the things I think that will be great is once we meet with the Disability Access Commission and they approve a plan, until such time that the DEP changes their requirements, we now have a plan that we can apply to all other applications. Because we can work with whatever the Disability Access Commission likes.
I'm going to, can I add, I, I should have added this to, to begin with, you know, not, not if, when they come to their senses and change the law on this, that all these spots go retro and, and the new law is, is put into, you know, in other words, if, if, once they decide that, you know, it's worthy of designated spots, then, then we then go back to this, we put that condition, that we go back and make this one, that these designated the way the new law would be.
I'm sure we can condition it that way.
That if, if, if the DEP.
Changes the rules.
Changes the rules, it, it would be restricted.
Right.
So, um, our next item is very similar. Item B, discussion request for approval of minor engineering change on Wall Street for the here's something with the applicant. I believe this is the same thing.
Exact same thing.
As long as everyone is amenable, we can apply the same language to this as well. Is there any difference in this application that you want to bring up to us?
There are 10 dual charging stations instead of 12, and so there's 20 spots that are served and still two handicap accessible locations that are being provided.
Anyone have any questions about this particular application that was current is not covered by the previous? No. Anyone online or in the room? No. Okay. I'm ready for a motion.
This is one Wall Street.
Yes.
Okay. So I'll make the motion to amend the previous approval of the request for the foodieers company for approval of a minor engineering change of property located at one Wall Street to allow for landscapes and hardscape modifications to enhance the primary building entrances and attractiveness of the site, as well provide better ingress experience for accommodative future tenants. So for the addition of electric vehicle charging stations at 20 spaces, these changes reduce the previous area by 454 square feet and result in loss of one parking space to facilitate handicap accessibility to be two EV charging spaces as reflected on the red line site plan entitled One Wall Street Burlington, Massachusetts, permit drawings prepared by Michael D. D'Angelo, landscape architect dated May 20th, 2023, consisting of two sheets subject to the following provisions, terms and conditions as amended.
Thank you. Any of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Six zero. Thank you, Mr. Weiss.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to the disability matters. Item 6A is a public hearing, application for approval of special permit, this is section 4.2.7.12, commercial board and care integrated for birds, fish, and animals of the zoning bylaws, 68 to 110 Burlington Mall Road, Fresh Pups LLC doing business as slash and dash groomery and boutique is the option. Love them.
Good evening, Madam Chair, and members of the board. For the record, attorney Mark Vaughn, here tonight representing Fresh Pups LLC. In connection with this application, with me is A.J. Bowman, who is one of the principals of this new company that I know is very excited about the opportunity to open what will probably be their first location or very close to it, um, in, in Massachusetts. So, um, A.J. and his partners are looking to open a dog grooming service business that would be located at Burlington Marketplace, uh, which Caleb is kind enough to bring up on the screen here right now. Uh, I know this is a, a retail center that you're obviously familiar with, but the space that they would be looking to occupy would be the space most recently occupied by Rev'd Indoor Cycling Studio, um, which unfortunately, or maybe fortunately for A.J., was not able to kind of survive through the, the pandemic and whatnot, but they'd be looking to occupy that very same square footage, same exact space. Uh, there's no, uh, changes to the exterior that are being proposed, uh, same entrance windows, all that. Obviously a new sign that they'd be putting up, uh, but that's the, the location, about 1600 square feet, I believe.
1630 square feet.
Yeah. Um, so they are, um, as referenced in the name, they are a dog groomery, uh, in boutique. I guess I would analogize it to maybe a, a man and mani for four-legged creatures, but something that they're, um, very much looking forward to and they feel that there's a, a market and a demand for it. I know that, you know, just, I, I think it would be a good complimentary use to this plaza, actually. There's some food-centric uses, obviously. This is something that would be more kind of spread out throughout the course of the day. I think their hours would be 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, uh, Monday through Saturday, not open on Sunday. Um, and, you know, I think it's an, an opportunity for someone that would be bringing a dog in for grooming services. I think it's typically a two, three-hour window of time. They'd have an opportunity to maybe do some shopping or have a, a bite to eat and help to sustain some of the other businesses in town as well during that, that time period. So there's no overnight boarding of, of dogs, everything. You know, you, you have a set time that you drop the dog off and then you pick up the dog at a, at a set time. So they don't keep the dogs, um, overnight. And they'd be responsible for all waste and cleanup, uh, uh, associated with it. And, um, again, uh, A.J., let me introduce you and you can fill in any gaps that I might have left out, so.
No, you did, um, A.J. Bowman, uh, like, um, like I said, one of the partners, um, with Fresh Pups. He did a very good job explaining our operations. Um, this is a new franchise that is, um, expanding across the country. Right now, there are about 15 locations, um, and we are, uh, going to be opening 10 locations, um, in Boston currently, or Greater Boston currently. So this is one of the first, um, that we are launching and we're very excited.
So I, I kind of skipped over the, it is a special permit use under the zoning bylaw, under, um, 42610, I think, a commercial boarding, care, treatment of animals. I did try to convince the building inspector that it's akin to a personal services spa, just for a four-legged creature, but he, he, he wouldn't fall for it. So, uh, we did trigger the need for the, uh, the special permit, so. But again, we think it's a nice complimentary use for that, that center and will, you know, obviously help them, but hopefully help the other businesses as well. So this is their, their website here with, uh, photo of the dog with the cucumbers on the.
Do you really put cucumbers on the dogs' eyes?
Of course. There's a great marketing machine behind there.
Only if they have bags.
Yes, exactly. We do have spa treatments for the dogs, though.
Um, staff, did you have anything more to add?
You know, pretty straightforward on our end, um, the only thing that we kind of product serve it, I know, we've been actually conducting a lot of veterinary clinics and animal centered spaces as just thinking there was a spot for the animals to relieve themselves. And where is that spot?
Yeah, we could, um, so if you can zoom out a little bit, Caleb, um, mind if I just go up and point it out or?
Over.
Houses?
Yeah. Yep. Yep. It's that grass landscaped area to the, to the right there, so.
No. It's next, it's actually next to, um, Cabin House.
Cabin, yeah.
Oh. Oh, we're there.
There.
Yeah, to the right, so.
Do you have access to the back as well through your back door?
Um, there, there is, there's a back.
There is a back to the door. Yeah, to get out back. Customers do not come through the full.
Yeah. So I think this, sorry to interrupt you, A.J., I, I think this area is more for if a customer brings a dog in and they're leaving and the dog has to go before getting in the car, this would be an area that would be available. They're responsible for daily pickup, cleanup and, you know, maintenance of that area, but it's just in the event that there is a patron where the dog does need to relieve themselves, either on the way in or out, so.
I understand that. I'm, I'm a former dog owner and, now my dog never went to grooming because he got grass at home, but if I were bringing my dog there and he needed to go when I came out, I would be going at that green island right there because it would never occur to me to walk all the way down to the other end of the plaza for my dog to feed. That's just what I would do. Because, um, how are you going to direct people?
We, we will give them instructions on where it is with a map, um, and whatnot. I mean, ultimately, we can't control where the dog goes. They don't always go where we want them to. But that's why we do, um, you know, multiple checks throughout the day.
I'm fine with that, but I would request that you also are responsible for cleaning up the islands closest to your establishment. Because I think people are going to bring your dogs there.
Can we also specify in there that it's not like, do not. I mean, you see how people belong all the time.
For your dog.
Do not let or do not let your dog go here. I don't know if that would work because.
Dogs have a mind of their own.
Yeah, we can talk to the landlord about, um, signage for that.
And so I have a boy dog that anything is bad for him. So in the case where a dog lifts its legs on a pole, or I know that plaza I really think of that stuff very often, um, there are, um, what do we call it? Like water bow, washing those off at the beginning of the day or something.
Yeah, I mean, I, look, I, I'm not a, I'm not a dog owner and I, but I understand what you're saying. So I, I, I mean, my thinking is that when someone comes in and they park and they bring their dog in, I mean, hopefully they're just walking the dog right into the, the store, um, and.
Accidents do happen. We are responsible to maintain and, and keep clean, um, in front of our storefront. And so that will be part of the daily routine that we're checking. And if there's a significant accident that happens on one of the bowlers or poles, you know, we will address that. Linear has been a good partner and we've been communicating a lot on, on all of these types of things to make sure that it continues to operate as a Class A retail center, um, and that's what we will continue to do, so.
Anyone else have any questions?
I'm just taking that a little differently here as I, I look at that and know the plaza fairly well. Is, is, is there kind of a, could you put it right outside, could you put a, like a, a dog?
Green patch, like a.
A dedicated patch outside, because they have, they have kind of dog grass, right? We're doing that with the rec department, uh, outside of the, the dog park.
They have fake dog grass?
Yeah. Yeah, they do.
Your dogs will go where other dogs go.
Right. So if you put, if you, if you have it dedicated there, then.
They'll smell other dogs and they'll go there.
The idea is we don't, I mean, I.
And you get the food places next to it, you get terrier after madness.
And you've got, yeah, I mean, putting it right in front is not.
I, I get it.
Yeah, yeah.
I think they, to A.J.'s point, I think that they can have instructions for patrons that say, you know, I, I don't, maybe it can be included in terms of the receipt or what they give, that, you know, if you need to have your dog.
Or in like the appointment reminder.
That's right, yeah. We, we will put it in part of our marketing and all of the, the communications with, um, the customers on what to do.
Um, I do think we should have a business that, that this business owner will monitor the, the closest green islands as well as the one that's designated.
Um, for the drop-offs, pickups, will you be spreading them throughout the day? Or will it be like 9:00 AM, we'll see.
No, yeah, it's spread out throughout the morning, generally speaking, so.
My, my dog does unfortunately go to the very sixties, very expensive. And the place it currently goes has a dedicated drop-off window and it's chaos. And that plaza is already chaos and not in the morning.
And that's one of the great things about this franchise, um, and this business model, is that it's all, um, it's really efficiently run and based, so everything's scheduled and people are given drop-off times and pickup times to like, to be able to not have that chaos, um, at 8:00 AM in the morning with, you know, 30 dogs arriving, so.
And is there a max amount of dogs? Like what would be your max amount of dogs at any given point?
I would say in the store, um, between, you know, approximately 30, depending on what's going on.
Okay.
Yep. So there's.
Fix baby love. You have a love.
Oh, and like, so they're all in kennels?
If they're not being worked on, then yes, they're in, they're in a kennel.
And so that's a lot of kennels.
A lot of barking.
There's a lot of barking.
Well, the, the, the customer isn't staying with the dog while they're being.
Sure, but it's a lot of. Bark and not park.
Oh, bark.
Wow, that's a lot of dogs. And.
That would be probably, you know, midday as the, you know.
This is overlap?
Yeah, as there's a little bit of overlap, but.
How long is an appointment?
Anywhere from like two to four hours.
It's more than it takes to do my hair.
There's a, a majority of our, um, appointments are actually just wash and, and dries. So those are really pretty quick and so it depends on the size of the dog, you know.
And then I noticed on the, um, I'm, I'm very excited for the. But I know, so I already spoke to the website, but I noticed on the website too that the, the franchise talks about, because obviously there's a lot, a lot of water used for grooming. And I noticed on the website it talks about the, um, equipment that helps with water conservation. Is that something this location will have to help?
It's whatever the, I, I don't know that, whatever the franchise approves that we use, we have to use, so. If that's in their literature, I imagine that's.
As far as I'm sure.
Yeah.
And then, sorry, one last question, I'm sorry. Will, will you be verifying vaccinations?
That, uh, no, that is not a requirement per the franchisor.
I don't believe it is even when I take my dog though, either.
Yeah, and where I take my dog, it's not a requirement.
They, they never verify that.
Some don't verify it, some do. Like, you know, when I take mine to a pet store, you have to show the latest one.
Yep.
Um, and they ask you every year, they remind you every year that you need to see it. I guess just with that, not a dog, I have a little concern about people being lazy with vaccinations. And because, and I've heard there, I think this past year, there was a lot of outbreaks too with like kennel cough and stuff like that. I would say that's just my only concern, but otherwise I don't have any concerns. I would say that's just my only concern, but otherwise, I don't have any concerns.
Well, then the doggy urgent care is going to get used.
Yeah.
The doggy urgent care.
Be feeding off each other.
Any more questions?
Yeah, a couple. I'm assuming the tenant's still...
That is correct, just the landlord gets notice, because the landlord is the property owner of record for the assessing department.
Okay, and I noticed that this grooming facility is directly beside a food, is that the Starbucks? Is that, is that correct? So, what measures are taken that there is no odor that emanates from one establishment to the other? Or is Starbucks even aware that you're moving into your neighborhood?
That would be a question for the landlord, Linear.
Mark?
I, I, I don't, I won't...
We have a significant soundproofing requirement in our lease with Linear that gets reviewed by a sound engineer, we're at that stage right now. And so we're, the decibel level of the dogs in the space can only be, so do not disturb the, our neighbors, so...
Okay, how about, is there an odor involved with the service?
There is not, so that is, this franchise does a really good job of managing any wet dog smell. We don't have standard towels, you know, or cloth materials that sort of trap in that odor, and the facility is scrubbed, you know, every day, at the end of the day, to make sure of that.
Chad, that's a good question for staff. Is it health?
Yes, they do. Yes, they do, or review this, this is a special permit, so it went to all the permitting departments.
So, they don't, they don't have any health concerns?
No. Christine Mathis put in to the viewpoint application that there are no comments regarding this. And they also came before the town permitting departments before DCM, and there was no red flags raised at that time either.
Do you have a laundry service, or do you launder all the towels yourself?
They're not towels, but yeah, they're more like a chamois type of thing, and we do have a service that will...
We have a service, thank you. Any other members with questions?
Just, so, I was half joking when I was talking about the barking piece of it, and I know you said you do a lot of soundproofing, but my, I guess my big concern is that if you have a Starbucks next door, there's a lot of people that put in the computers and work there all day long. So, I'm a little concerned about what the levels of noise is acceptable and what isn't, from your perspective, and would that be the same levels that are acceptable from Starbucks' perspective, you know?
So, I guess I would have to say, it's written into our lease specifically that Linear will approve the soundproofing plan per guidance from their sound engineer. And so, I imagine it's Starbucks' lease, there must be, you know, some quiet enjoyment or whatever the language might be to protect them from any...
Right.
So, I can say that we're working to not disturb the neighbors in an unreasonable manner.
So, that is in the lease?
It is in the lease.
That will be reviewed for noise?
Correct.
Yeah, I'll also say that the previous tenant with the indoor cycling studio, and those are, those are music, those are like blasting music as loud as possible, so if they were able to get done with the previous tenant, I would imagine that they could also, whatever engineering has to happen and whatever noise can cause to happen would also be possible for barking dogs.
Well, we also know that that place left, so we're not sure why.
They were driven out by angry Starbucks. All right, any other questions? No? Okay. Anyone online that wants to speak on this matter, or in the room? Seeing no one, I think we are ready for a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request of Fresh Pups, oh, close public hearing, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a closing public hearing, Madam Chair.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Six zero.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request of Fresh Pups LLC doing business as Splash and Dash Groomery and Boutique for approval of special permit pursuant to section four point two point six point twelve, commercial boarding care treatment of birds, fish and animals of the sound of Burlington zoning bylaw to a law that allows for the operation of dog grooming facility to be located in the existing sixteen hundred and thirty plus minus square feet tenant space to be known as Splash and Dash Groomery and Boutique for property located in sixty-eight dash one hundred and ten Burlington Mall Road in the general business district in October District, as is written.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Six zero. Welcome to Burlington.
Thank you, we're excited to be here.
When do you think you'll...
Oh, well, now that we have this approval, full steam ahead, so I think in the next three months, I think, is what we're targeting.
Wish you much success.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your time, appreciate it, thanks. Yeah, thanks, Caleb.
All right, so I think that leaves us two minutes. Are they going to have a chance to review the minutes of June first, twenty twenty-three? Okay. I am ready for a motion.
All right, here, I'm going to...
I'm going to abstain to my own question. So, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes of June first, twenty twenty-three.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Aye.
So, we're four zero two? Okay, thank you. A few discussion matters.
Sure, so I spent a lot of my day yesterday, previously and yesterday, kind of looking at bylaw amendments that I'm going to go forward with at the town meeting, kind of looking at transportation demand management. So, I have created, you know, I think we're going to split it up into three, so one for definitions, new definitions, one for shared parking. So, that's one thing that I think that we should be looking at, instead of requiring a lot of paving, is to kind of more encouraging of shared parking. It says it in their bylaw, but it's a little, but it's kind of like, not very clear. And, you know, it's just more specific about things like, you know, if you want to do it, you can do it, but we need a legally binding agreement for you to, you know, that type of thing. The other thing is transportation demand management, so that would be, I think, the third item. And that's basically for companies that are, I mean, we can discuss with officials, that are, I'm thinking, kind of companies that ten thousand additional square feet or a certain number of, you know, trips, you know, that we would kind of require transportation demand management measures, and then those would be, you know, we would have to see proof of that on any annual basis, so it would be like a revolving thing. And I think that we will be opening that at the joint meeting in July, and so...
So, what is the date of our July meeting?
July twentieth.
July twentieth, okay. So, that's when we're going to do the joint meeting?
Yep.
So, at six thirty, or do they intend to start earlier?
It is, I mean, it's kind of up to you guys.
I don't know if people can come earlier, that's why I asked. It would be difficult, would it be difficult for people to come prior to six thirty?
You can do what? How do you schedule meetings now, obviously, if you're... Anyone else?
I can, I can come in.
What time did you say?
We want to do it six, I can start.
Do you start at six?
Can you maybe get an idea of what your agenda is, however, we want to have this one?
So, I'm going to be bringing three, and...
Okay, sorry.
Sorry, I mean...
So, did you change it to six?
I don't think we've done it officially yet, but I'm just asking everyone if that works for them.
Yeah, so I think, I think that Sherry and CDRC are bringing something. I'm also bringing another one, kind of correcting weird mishaps from years past.
Sure, sure.
I think we can wait to set the time.
Yeah, I'll set that to the whole.
It will depend on what else we have on our agenda, too. If it's a very late agenda, maybe we don't have to start at six.
Yeah.
Yep, so, we'll keep that high, but that's kind of, it's happening, yeah.
Okay, did any other members have any new business they want to...
Just one meeting in July, is that right?
That's correct, one meeting in July, one on this, yep.
Anything else?
What date, August?
July twentieth.
August.
And then August seventeenth.
August, sorry.
Thank you.
Morning. All right.
Okay. All right, sounds good. Five?
What's your made to adjourn?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. Six zero.